Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Kane.
Here.
Poyer.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Here.
Olson.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to begin this evening with the recognition of Business Partnership. I'll turn over to Dr. Reverend.
Thank you. Good evening. We are very excited to continue our Business Partner Recognition Program here in District 88. And as we've shared in many previous meetings, we can't do what we do without the help of our community, our community organizations, and certainly our business partners. And while this has been a tradition that we've had in District 88 for some time, our most recent expansion of our business partner opportunities for our students has really emphasized this priority for the district and really reinforced the value and the commitment from the district to connect with our business partners. So tonight, we have a special business partner to recognize, and we are happy to have Letizia Herrera, agent and owner with American Family Insurance, as well as her assistant, Julissa Guillen. Is both here? Yes? Okay. Ladies, if you'd like to come to the table, I'm going to say a few words about you, but welcome. Welcome. So I'm going to read just a few things about your partnership with the district, and then you'll be able to say a few words if you'd like. So Letizia Herrera, agent and owner with American Family Insurance, is a prime example of an individual and company working with us to achieve our goals. Letizia and her assistant Julissa Guillen enthusiastically participate in our Heritage Spanish Career Fluency Program, which helps students develop their skills in professional settings and introduces them to various career paths while enhancing their biliteracy. This is accomplished through a job shadow component where students visit various work sites once a week during second semester of the school year. The goal of this course is to encourage students to use their Spanish as much as possible so they can learn about different fields and how to use their Spanish professionally to give them a competitive edge. The Heritage Spanish Career Fluency Program wouldn't be possible without the support of individuals like Letizia and Julissa. They've been incredibly generous and flexible, never say no when we ask if they could take one more student, and they have welcomed more than 30 district students into American Family Insurance. We know embracing our students' biliteracy as an asset will help prepare them for success in their future endeavors. The positive effects of the Heritage Spanish Career Fluency Program can best be understood through the students' own words. As one student reflected, this was translated from Spanish, but the most impactful experience of all was with American Family Insurance. They explained to us why it's good to have life insurance and its benefits. They gave us different perspectives from people who have life insurance versus those who don't, and the different circumstances or situations that can arise. As you can see, Letizia and Julissa with American Family Insurance are tremendous business partners, and we thank them for all they do for our students, families, and the community. We just want to really, again, you know, thank you and let you know how much we appreciate you opening your doors to our students. We know it's not easy, and it takes some patience and perseverance to work through different challenges, to connect what you do in your world with what the student's experience is, but providing those authentic experiences for our students is incredibly invaluable. So our Board President, Donna Kane, has some, has an award for you.
On behalf of the board, I have this plaque to present to you as one of our business partners. We really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. Want to say a few words?
Sure. So when Erica reached out and asked if we would, you know, take on this responsibility, I said, sure, you know, I would love to give back to my community, but I'll be honest, I was kind of, I didn't want to bore the kids with insurance lingo, and I thought they might be a little bit bored. So we tried to, you know, make it as fun as possible, as fun as insurance can be, but I was really impressed at how these kids really embraced everything we had to say. And they were really sharp students, and they actually made our day. We look forward to having them come because we learned a lot from them, right? We would ask them like, hey, what's hot in marketing right now? You know, how can we market our agency? And they're all like, TikTok. And I'm like, what's trending? So we really got them involved and kind of explained what we did, but I think it worked well both ways. I think we enjoyed them and learned from them as much as we hope we gave back to them.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you so much. And thanks for coming tonight. Yeah.
Next, we have recognition of District 88 Successes, the Insprah Distinguished Service Award.
So tonight, we have another special recognition. We have our Board President, Donna Kraft Kane, who was named as Distinguished Service Celebration recipient by the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, or INSPR. That program recognizes individuals and groups throughout the state who partner with their school communications office to serve as ambassadors for public education and champions of students and staff. Donna was recognized during the INSPR's annual event, which took place on May 16th. For more than 20 years, Donna has served the learning community of District 88. Donna is the epitome of a leader focused on strengthening overall support for public education, and she works tirelessly to ensure the district provides a comprehensive and high-quality education for all students and champions personalized learning and high expectations for each child. Donna has served on the District 88 Board of Education since 2004 and has been Board President since 2011. She is an alumna of Bullerburg High School. I won't say the class, but that's okay. Is a parent of three District 88 graduates and is a longtime resident and business owner in the District 88 community. Those experiences enable her to see the district from various perspectives and excel in her position as Board President. One of the most challenging aspects of serving on the Board of Education is striving to represent all stakeholders, especially when working to resolve a crisis or difficult situation. Donna has an uncanny ability to represent those various voices, yet stay focused on what's best for all students and ensure equitable outcomes. Throughout the 23-24 school year, Donna helped lead the district in updating its strategic plan. She insisted the plan be culturally responsive and include measurable goals that would be monitored and transparent to the public through an online data dashboard. Donna made sure the strategic plan expanded and enhanced the district's focus on providing multiple and flexible pathways for students to achieve their post-secondary goals and reach their college and career success. As a business owner, Donna has seen the efforts of the, I'm sorry, the effects of labor shortage firsthand and knows how critical it is to connect students with work-based learning experiences and remove barriers in this area, including implementing flexibilities and changes to the district's graduation requirements. Donna has worked hard to get staff, students, parents, and community members behind this shift. Donna was also in favor of adding incentives for teachers to pursue endorsements in English as a second language and special education, so they develop skills and knowledge to better assist students. She also supports the district efforts to provide students with opportunities to share their voice, including creating an email for students to send feedback to the Board of Education, hosting superintendent and principal advisory groups, and implementing a variety of culturally responsible events for targeted groups of students. During her years of service, Donna helped establish the District 88 Foundation as well. She spent countless hours planning events to raise funds for mini-grants and implement innovative teacher-led initiatives that benefit District 88 students. When it comes to supporting the efforts, work, and mission of the Communications and Community Relations Department, Donna is the biggest advocate and cheerleader. She constantly helps promote the district's electronic newsletter, shares likes and comments on the district's social media posts, attends district and community events, has a strong pulse on the community to inform and partner with the department, and is the first one to compliment and thank the department. As you can see, District 88 successes are a direct result of Donna's leadership, vision, and commitment, and she has helped ensure positive futures for thousands of students and families and has truly left a lasting impact on public education. So thank you, Donna, for your service, and congratulations on this award. Vice President, Mr. Olson, has an award. It's a far walk.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the nomination. Obviously, as a Board President, the work is not done alone. It's done with all the board, and I'm very lucky to have a great administration, great board members to do everything that we do. And I figure the thing I do best, Danny, is I stay out of the news and causing problems, right? That's what I figure the Board President's job is, is not to create news, but to, you know, at least promote all the good things that we do in the district. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, we have, I think we have some refreshments, or we have some cake, right, to celebrate a birthday? So why don't we take a short, ten-minute break? We can have cake. We can greet our business partners, and then we'll come back to the meeting. Thank you.
Bennington, he is stout. Here, Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to petitions and hearings. It's break to the Board of Education to provide a place on the agenda for, and welcome comments and suggestions to the public. Do we have any cards this evening?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move along to the motion to establish the consent agenda.
I'd just like to inform the board that we do have a revised personnel report as part of the consent agenda. There's a copy at your place as well.
Thank you.
I move to establish a consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion is approved. Next, we have the motion to, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we'll move along to separate action items. The first one is the treasurer's report for April 2025.
Presenting to the board this evening for month ending April 30th, 2025, a total balance of $56,590,827.03. Our interest rates continue to trend down this month, down to 4.53 percent. Otherwise, this interest, this month's interest income was $201,661.19, bringing our year-to-date interest income to $3121,517.93.
I move that the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the budget status report.
For the education fund, local revenues through April, the district has received 48.4 percent, or approximately $25 million of budgeted revenues, which is up slightly 0.51 percent over the prior year. Good chunk of that remaining money will be received in the back end of this month, as well as next month's, once the tax receipts start coming in. Otherwise, other local revenue is up four and a half percent from this time last year. CPPRT collections, we've received about 75.8 percent, or roughly a little over $1.76 million. Investment income is strong and currently at over $2 million collected thus far. A la carte food sales are also strong, about 118 percent of budget, or roughly $515,351 year-to-date. Finally, registration fees, parking fees, and athletic entry fees budget are at 94 percent collected thus far. And then for state aid, collections are down a little over 2 percent from the prior year, with $6.17 million received, or roughly 81.8 percent. And we have received all the planned federal money for the year. In regards to expenses, they are trending down compared to last year, about 1.05 percent. Salaries are down year-over-year, about one and a quarter. Benefits are up 0.94 percent. Contractual services are down 4.47 percent, and supplies are trending high at 17.5 percent. Capital outlay is down 16.2, and tuition expense is currently down 2.91 percent. For the O&M fund, revenues at 50.91 percent, or approximately $4.12 million, are collected year-to-date. It's down roughly 1.77 percent compared to last year. Investment income is at 93.8 percent of budget. And then the only other revenue expected in this fund is, bless you, is the 50,000 school maintenance grant, which was received last month. Otherwise, no other revenue is anticipated for this fund. In regards to expenses, overall year-over-year activity is at 85.9 percent expended, up approximately 12.7 percent versus the prior year. Where we are doing well, salaries and benefits are down. Salaries are down 1.24 percent, and benefits are down 6.18 percent. Where we are getting some pressures are the utilities and purchase service expenses, which are up 25.5 percent year-over-year, and supplies are up 21.7 percent year-over-year. This is mostly due to some unexpected repairs that we've discussed in the past, but just as a reminder, we had to do some rotting and jetting of some pipes over at Willa Brook. We had to replace the infield over at the baseball field over at Willa Brook High School, and then some repair work for Boiler Two, as well as we had a freezer go down in the cafeteria, which we needed a compressor. So some unexpected repairs are driving, you know, some of these expenses in this fund. In regards to capital expenditures, we are up 34.5 percent. These projects included the female locker replacement, the roof re-coatings, and boiler refurbishment, and the 10-year health, life, safety, long-range facility plan. Majority of these have been closed out. We're just waiting on the 10-year plan to close out. Moving on to the transportation fund, revenues are approximately $4.04 million, or 54.8 percent of budget, down about 16.7 percent compared to this time last year. Within the other local revenues, investment income is strong, $326,854 collected, or roughly 218 percent of budget, as we look to try to rebuild this fund balance. State aid, no real changes. We expected to receive four categorical payments, and have confirmed that we received a third payment this past month. That's what we were looking and watching when we reported out last month. However, the state is still lagging, and I'm still optimistic that we'll receive our fourth categorical payment in June, but at that same time, with the prorating of the state reimbursement that we discussed this last meeting, I don't believe we'll receive 100 percent of the state budgeted revenues for this year. Also in this fund, there are no federal revenues. As it relates to expenses, expenditures of approximately $5.06 million are trending slightly up, 1.23 percent over the prior year. We have gotten all the March invoices paid in April, except for our neighbor, who submitted their invoice to us the first week of May. So all the other invoices have been accounted for, except that one. And then finally, in the IMR pension fund, revenue of just over $1.22 million, or 54.2 percent of budget, up 6.19 percent over the prior year, and then expenses of $1.72 million, or 77.47 percent of budget, is slightly up 0.44 percent over the prior year. So still monitoring those same areas that we've been discussing, really focusing now on the O&M purchase service lines and supplies. Tom is doing his best to manage that, but some of the unexpected repairs that pop up, we just have to address at the time they show their face.
I move that the Board of Education approve the budget status report as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the amended budgets fiscal year for 2024-25.
We are recommending the Board of Education place the amended budget for 2024-25 on file for the required 30 days prior to holding the public hearing in June and subsequent adoption. The recommendation to amend the budget is being made for the following reasons. The first is to reflect the corrected transfer of funds from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund for the '25-'26 school year, as we pre-fund the next fiscal year facility projects. This is necessary due to the accrual accounting requirements, since it's the fund, the capital projects fund does not carry a reserve sufficient enough to cover the contracts that we have awarded for this summer's work. The original budget was for a $2 million abatement from working cash into the project, into the capital projects fund. However, with the projects that have been awarded, the capital project fund needs $2,360,641. So an additional $360,000, $360,641, it needs to be transferred in there. The second reason is to reflect the TRS on behalf contribution in the amount of $21,050,000. This is an annual amendment that is required to meet the state board requirements for an accurate budget that reflects its on behalf contribution. This on behalf contribution represents the state share of annual contributions to the TRS pension fund for our district. There is a corresponding revenue and expense added to the budget, so the net impact is $0. But this is still required in accordance with the accrual accounting standards of GASB 68. The schedule for the budget amendment process is as follows. So at the May 19th board meeting, the board will authorize the amended budget to be placed on file for 30 days. The public notice, which is attached, will be published in the local newspaper starting tomorrow, declaring the public hearing, which will be scheduled for June 23rd, at the June 23 board meeting. In addition, the proposed amended legal budget will be placed on the district's website as required. At the June 23rd board meeting, the public hearing will be conducted, along with a recommendation to adopt the amended budget for the '24-'25 school year, and a resolution will be presented as required by the Illinois School Code.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to place the amended budget for 2024-2025 on file for 30-day public review, effective Tuesday, May 20th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the treasurer's board bond renewal, sorry.
Annually, the Board of Education must consider the amount of a treasurer's surety bond coverage to purchase. The actual bond is to be in place before July 1 and certified to the Regional Office of Education. In accordance with the Illinois School Code, the minimum level of bonding allowed is 10 percent of the highest available monies during the period of coverage. I have reviewed the current year treasury reports, and the highest monthly balance is typically either in September or October, when all the tax receipts have come in. As of September 2024, the combined cash plus investment balance was $104,288,173. Therefore, allowing for the expected increase of funds from the tax extension and other sources, a bond of $10,900,000 would be appropriate. The renewal quotation from 180 brokers' risk in the amount of $10,903 for the '25-'26 fiscal year represents an increase of $328, or roughly 3.1 percent over the current year's bond.
I move that the Board of Education accept the proposal from 180 brokers' risk to purchase a treasurer's surety bond in the amount of $10,900,000 at a premium cost of $10,903 for 2025-2026.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the item E, resolution declaring the intention to issue funds, so turn over to.
All right. So following suit from the Finance Committee this last week, two weeks ago, the next step in the process towards issuance of the new borrowing is to approve the resolution of official intent to issue $4 million of working cash fund bonds, commonly referred to as the resolution of intent, which directs the publication of notice of such intent in the newspaper. And then it starts the 30-day petition period. This notice will be published in the Daily Herald on Wednesday, May 21. PMA handles that publication for us. The second motion calls for a public hearing to be conducted by the board and directs the publication of notice of hearing with respect to the working cash fund bonds. This hearing is commonly referred to as the Bond Issue Notification Act, or BINA, hearing, as outlined in the attached borrowing schedule. Once approved, PMA will also publish that notice that is part of this order in the Daily Herald on the 21st as well, thereby establishing the hearing date for Monday, June 9, 2025. These resolutions and/or orders were prepared by Chapman &amp; Culler LLP, who will be serving as both bond counsel and disclosure counsel, as they have for the most recent borrowings and refunding actions.
Okay. Any other motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution of intent to issue working cash fund bonds.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion carries. Next, I adjourn the motion to approve the bond issue notification.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Bond Issue Notification Act, or BINA, order.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we'll move along to item F, the SASED classroom lease for 2025-26.
The SASED Board of Control approved the classroom lease agreement between DuPage High School District 88 and SASED for the '25-'26 school year in the amount of $125,000 for five classrooms. This is the same five classrooms as the prior year, three at Addison Trail, two at Willa Brook, and for the same rate. The administration recommends the approval of the SASED classroom lease agreement for the '25-'26 school year as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the classroom lease agreement with SASED for 2025-2026 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item G.
It is recommended that the board approve the lease of mail postage meters and folding machines for Willa Brook and the district office from Quadient for a monthly lease cost of $828.28 for a term of 60 months, for a total lease cost of $49,696.80. The existing leases on the machines being replaced expire May 29, 2025. The existing equipment is being phased out and will not continue to be compliant with current USPS standards. The proposed pricing includes two postage machines and two folding machines and maintenance for all throughout the term of the lease. District 88 has utilized Quadient equipment for many years, and the machines have been reliable and have served the district's needs. Quadient was awarded the Sourcewell Contract for Intelligence Software and Hardware conditions, uh, solutions, which includes postage meters and folding machines. Sourcewell is a national government purchasing cooperative, which solicits competitive bidding and awards contracts to the lowest responsible bidder. Bidders are typically given five to six weeks for a response, and all bids are to be sealed. Contracts are only available to government agencies and not profit sectors.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the lease of postage and folding machines in the amount of $828.28 per month, and a 60-month total of $49,696.80 from Quadient.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Does Addison Trail not expire, or do they not have one?
Correct. It does not expire, yes.
One more year, I believe.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call. Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the purchase of custodial supplies.
We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the purchase of custodial supplies for Addison Trail, Willa Brook, and the district office for the '25-'26 school year from the lowest responsive and responsible bidders, as noted below. The bid consisted of 38 items, with bids received from 13 suppliers. Details listing all bids are in the attached bid summary.
I move that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bids for custodial supplies as indicated above, in the total amount of $72,797.31.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call. Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Bennington?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Kane? Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the ESSA Consolidated District Plan update.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone. Tonight, I will be presenting on the consolidated district plan. This is a presentation that's done to the board every year, because we need approval at tonight's meeting before I could submit to the Illinois State Board of Education for an allocation of these funds in July. So in accordance with federal guidelines to receive Title I, II, III, IV, and IDEA funding, each school district must submit a consolidated district plan. We call it a CDP. This plan includes a focus on providing a high-quality education for all students, the steps the district will take to ensure student success, and strategies to close the achievement gap. Before funds are dispersed, we must submit this plan to the Board of Education for year review. So as you can see on the slide, Titles I, II, and IV are grouped together, and those are focused on school improvement and instructional improvement, as well as teacher training, and any staff training and best practices, and any staff development. And then Title IV is encompassing a well-rounded education for students, so it focuses on STEM support. I know I've, in anything in the fine arts, I've, I've used the funds to purchase instruments for students, and even calculators to support them in STEM. So there's, there's a wide range in Titles I, II, and IV. Title III is centered on English language learners and the supports they need, and then IDEA is meant for the special education students to support students with disabilities. Using the District 88 strategic plan, needs are assessed to identify instructional improvement initiatives. This can be staff training, supplemental instructional materials, and additional resources to support staff, students, and families within the district. We also garner feedback from our stakeholder groups to determine the best way to allocate these funds. On the screen, these, I'm providing the allocations that we have for fiscal year '25, so these are the allocations for this school year. We have not received FY '26 allocations yet. We expect them to be somewhat similar, and once we do, once our CDP is approved, we usually get our budget and our numbers in about July, and that's when we create our budgets and submit the actual grant applications at that time. So in terms of a preliminary proposal for the use of the funds, in Titles I, II, and IV, we're going to be focusing on continuing, continued training and instructional best practices, and also continuing our multilingual education for staff. We will continue to provide supplemental instructional materials and textbooks, and that can be calculators, like I said, for students. It could be any lab supplies, any sort of, you know, magazines, or any supplemental items in the class, as we can use Title Funds IV. We also offset the costs of AP exams for our students, and also the seal of biliteracy exams are used, these funds are used for. And then lastly, in Titles I, II, and IV, we support the AC testing and the preparation costs, and then we cover curriculum writing costs for teachers, as well as parent programming, including translation and interpretation services. In Title III, very similar to Titles I, II, and IV, but the focus here is on our EL students, our English learner students. So that will encompass parent programming support, teacher support, and then again supplemental, supplementary instructional materials. So that's a lot of magazines for the students, and different literary pieces that the students can use to apply in their classrooms. And then finally, IDEA, the proposal is to provide staff development to our staff to support children with disabilities, to also hire personnel, support personnel to work with our students, and then to purchase any equipment needed to implement the IPs or support the accommodations. Finally, the funds can be used for contract services when the service is specific to a specific student with a disability. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval for the consolidated district plan to be submitted to the State Board of Education.
I move that the Board of Education accept the consolidated district plan as presented for District 88 to submit to the Illinois State Board of Education.
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
I have, I have two questions, actually. Are these state funds that we're allocating? Okay. And then is there anything in this allocation that's substantially different from, you know, how we've allocated the funds in the past? Let me clarify my last answer. I'm sorry. It's, they're through the Illinois State Board of Education, but they're federal funds, but the state board funnels them to us. So let me clarify that one. And can you repeat your second question? I'm sorry.
Is there anything in this proposal that's substantially different from what we've done in the past?
Uh-uh. There's nothing. The only change that I had to do here is that we switch from SAT testing to ACT testing, and we, the training, the professional development training for teachers is more specific with the multilingual education and literacy training for teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Has there been any indication that the state's not going to get the federal funds yet, or at this point, we're just kind of proceeding as normal?
At this point, we're proceeding as normal. We have no, we don't have any allocations, but we historically don't get them this early. I didn't get them this year, last year, I mean, so we are moving on as hopefully as possible.
Okay. Thanks.
Just pile on. When I bring the amended budget next month, I will have kind of our current allocations as placeholders, and then when we get our allocations over the summer, when I bring the final budget in September, I will true up all those grants to determine out what was awarded to us, you know, at that time.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, Ben. Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Then we move on to information discussion. We had the Freedom of Information request as well as credit card summary, and then we'll move on to the school recognition, and we'll start with Willowbrook today.
Thanks so much. We're in May, well, well through it, certainly with quite a few events and activities, most notably graduation yesterday, an incredible event to honor more than 500 graduating students in the class of 2025, a fun celebration ceremony, lots of laughs and tears, and, and certainly energy for one another, which was exciting. Last week, we closed up our spring concert series, and we certainly did it with a lot of thunder and lightning and losing power, but we, this concert went on. So, the, the choir did a tremendous job of keeping the audience entertained, even while outside the auditorium. We didn't have lights for about 45 minutes, but they came right back and we, we did okay. Then, we followed that up with our softball night under the lights at the stadium for the first ever since I was told 1939 dust storm that postponed that game. So, it was a heck of a weather event for, for a couple of days there, but we persevered and definitely enjoyed every moment we could. Tomorrow night is our inaugural sophomore award ceremony. We've designed an opportunity for the class of 2027 to be recognized for academics, co-curricular activities, and, and a few other criteria, as well as teacher recommendations. So, it's just over 100 students. It'll be honored for that, excuse me, and we're excited for it. Last week, we also hosted our Warrior Code BBQ. That's our school-wide student barbecue where we celebrate our school year. Our staff barbecue is coming up this Thursday. That always culminates, gives the, the end of the year feel for sure because final exams are next week. So, as we come back after Memorial Day, we'll, we'll wrap up the school year on the 27th, 28th, and 29th, and as students complete their exams. In athletics, our senior athletic banquet was last week and honored a variety of different, all of the teams and our seniors in different areas and their accomplishments. In spring sports, congratulations to Amelie Ojeda and Olivia Gualtney, both members of the class of 2025. They'll be competing this weekend at Eastern Illinois University at the IHSA State Track Meet. Olivia, I'm sorry, Amelie qualified in two events, the 1600 and the 3200, and then Olivia qualified in the 400. So, we're super excited for them. We're going to have a send-off on Thursday morning. Boys track and field competes this week in sectionals, and their state meet will be the following weekend. Boys gymnastics, our combined AT and Willowbrook team, placed sixth in the state at the Illinois High School Gymnastic Coaches Association State Meet. They held that at Hoffman Estates. The team, again, placed sixth overall. Daniel Javier was all-state in five different events, did a tremendous job, including in the all-around. And then Jay Newman did the very first ever on the horizontal bar triple dismount. Though, they, they said that no other student has ever done that in an Illinois High School gymnastics meet, so, and stuck the landing. So, it was incredible. I don't know if you saw, if anyone saw the video, it was, yeah, unreal. So, congratulations to him and the team. They did a tremendous job. We also had Hannah Daly and Macy Thompson that competed at the IHSA State Badminton Championships this past weekend. Boys tennis has sectionals this week. Girls soccer team just concluded a great season. They lost in the opening round of the regional. Baseball is the number-one seed in the IHSA sectional, and then, that we will be hosting in two weeks, but regionals begin next week. Softball has regionals next week as well, and boys volleyball has IHSA regionals next week. So, spring sports will very quickly start to come to a close here, and then we roll right into summer school beginning on June 2. And just a quick highlight for July 4, the Villa Park 4th of July Parade. The two bands, Addison Trail and Willowbrook, are actually going to combine to march together. That will be really exciting for that, that event and looking forward to that. And then, they're going to do an encore performance for the Medina Shriners Parade in August here in Addison. So, band directors came together with the proposal, and we're super, we're excited for them. So, just a few, few highlights.
Thank you. Now, Addison Trail.
All right. We had a lot of similar events happening over at Addison Trail. Last week, we had our PBIS BBQ, our Blazer Pride BBQ. Just thanks to everybody for their support and helping that, get that set up. We also had a recognition assembly, excuse me, last Thursday, and then prom on Friday. Took the day off on Saturday and jumped right back into it for graduation on Sunday. Just huge shout-out to, of course, Ms. Ferraro for emceeing graduation. Ari and Caitlin and Leslie did a great job on their speeches, as well as Donna. So, just thank you. I think both ceremonies were, were awesome from what I hear about Willowbrook, too. But just congrats to our 441 seniors who did graduate. And huge shout-out to JROTC, who also did the presentation, posting of the colors. That was really a new addition this year, which anything new is always like, where does it fit in the schedule? But they did a really nice job. The students were excited to be a part of that. They did that for the recognition ceremony as well as for graduation. Our Blazer Cafe has had like a silent, soft opening to just start using some of the equipment. We haven't necessarily promoted it too far and wide. Apparently, that's a thing with soft openings. So, we've been open for the past few weeks, working out all the kinks, but we believe we got everything kind of up and running, so excited for that to kick off and be fully open at the beginning of next school year. Upcoming, we're not done with graduation ceremonies. We host Indian Trails promotional ceremony on Thursday, so anybody who's in the area, we will have a busy parking lot again. That's why I shared that, so just as a heads-up. No school on Monday, and then, as Dr. Kraus mentioned, final exams rolling right in on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Our baseball team has a play-in game this Saturday. They'll be playing Proviso East, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. Dr. Kraus mentioned summer school beginning June 2, and summer camps also begin right on that Monday as well. So, looking forward to summer beginning. I wouldn't say summer break, but summer beginning. Thank you.
I just want to say both, I thought both graduations were great, and I, you know, went to a college graduation on Saturday and was so disappointed with the audience. They didn't pay attention. They were rude, and I was just so proud of our students and their parents and everybody there. They're disrespectful, and, and it just makes it a really, really nice day, so I appreciate that very much. Now, Board Member reports. Or did you? Nope. Any Board Member reports? No. And then Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick things. Charlie, can you pull up our website? There we go. So, first of all, just a reminder for parents that registration and residency verification for next school year is available, so we encourage you to, to start that process if you haven't done so. But we wanted to point out something that has been a, a piece that was gathered with some, through some feedback from parents related to our website. And so, you'll see up at the top, the top bar there where it says Quick Links. Oh, there it is. Now, it's going to be, okay. Parent Resources, thank you. Some of the changes to Parent Resources. So, if you go to Parent Resources at the top there, Charlie, on the black, the black line?
All-in.
There you go. Mm-hmm. Okay. We have all of the, the most commonly visited, you know, sites on our, on our website, pages on our website, I should say, are now in one spot. So, this is based on traffic, you know, that we have, we have been monitoring, if you will, on our pages, and just in terms of feedback of the most commonly requested information that parents will, you know, call the schools to, to gather. And so, we tried to put this on, on one page, as, as parents go to the site, it's, you know, kind of all housed in one spot. So, we do have this up and running, and, you know, again, it, it's not, these aren't, we didn't build new pages. We just are, we now basically directed, you know, or linked our, our pages with the most current information to this page, so parents can access more easily. So, I would encourage parents to, to go there for their questions first, and of course, you know, outside of the website, we encourage to always call, call our buildings to, you know, to, we can provide assistance on whatever's needed. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Now, a place for public comments. Do we have any comments from the public?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. Thank you.
If that Parent Resources on, on phones, it doesn't go over, if there's a way to get that in with your, on a mobile device, that would be nice.
Thank you for the non-public comment. The observation. Appreciate that. Okay. Move along then to announcements. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, June 9, 2026, at 7:30 p.m. in the District Boardroom, located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. And then, following, the Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, June 23, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. in the District Boardroom, located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. To stay in mind, we're going to entertain a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of, A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer in the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body, determines validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted in accordance with this Act by Illinois Compiles Statutes 120/2C1 and B, collective negotiated matters between public body and its employees, whether representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Sorry.
Okay. And, roll call, please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. A motion's approved, and we'll move into closed session.[1316.52]
Okay, we're back an open session. Roll call please.
Kane?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Finnegan?
Here.
Poyer?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Galavan? Olson?
Here.
There's no action that necessitated by the closed session, therefore I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, actually any names? Ayes have it. We need to adjourn.